This conference will now be recorded.
So Daniel, are we expecting this is everybody?
Let's see.
I know Joel's not gonna.
Yeah, John McAvoy and Joel are both not going to make it. We have a new SWAC and DSAC member who I believe should be making it didn't indicate that they wouldn't be able to make it today. I think, and then I didn't get any word from Ian on whether or not they'd be able to make it, so. Potentially Brent and Ian are are still unaccounted for.
Well, since we only have an hour, I think we should. Plunge right in. Sorry, just got a little interruption there. So let me call this meeting order. Let's see. Let me see if I can do the appropriate chair things. What is today? It's Wednesday, November 16th. It's six o'clock. This is a joint work session with SWAC and DSAC. We do have a quorum of members present. Is there anything I forgot? Okay, good.
You didn't say what year it was.
Oh, yes, it is the year 2022.
You're good. Sorry, no worries.
We are, we are creating an archive for the ages, so those sorts of things are indeed important.
Indeed.
Uh, let's see. Okay, so the first item, oh, Brent is indeed here. Welcome, Brent. We'll bring, we'll give you a minute to sort out things. So just a little bit of. I'm not sure what to call it. So I do want to note again that we are kind of meeting under extraordinary circumstances. This isn't a normal joint work session. We are meeting kind of under the auspices of. Of the. The Benton County Trash Talk Work Group, and so that's kind of the going to be the main, that's going to be kind of the only. Agenda item for today, and we are under a time limit, so we're off again at seven o'clock. Just want to acknowledge that. People in the public can write us comments. We aren't accepting. We're not able to have to host. Actual discussions with people at this time, neither SWAC nor DSAC. So I did want to acknowledge that we've received email comments from John Hart, Nancy Whitcomb, Doug Pollack, Chuck Gilbert, our very own Chuck Gilbert. Ran a foster, our very own Joel Guyer. And there may be some others that I have forgotten that were actually in the queue from earlier. But those comments have been received and we will take them up. As soon as we can, just want to acknowledge that people have written some very thoughtful. Testimonies for this committee, and those are just sitting in this pile at the present time, but that's the situation we find ourselves in. And I think that, did I forget anything, Daniel, that conclude that kind of introductory part, just acknowledgement, right, of materials that we've received?
And I, I think, I think that makes sense, but yeah, feel free to handle those as needed, just with being, being mindful of the time. And I think Mark might have a comment on it, too.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mark, were you raising your hand? And I was ignoring it as usual.
You were not ignoring it, you just hadn't seen it yet. I was just curious, so are those, where are those? I, I, there's admittedly dozens of emails a day now coming in. I'm just curious. Where are those specific comments that you just referenced? Are they on the SWAC and DSAC website, or are they record? I haven't, as far as I know, I haven't seen them.
So I'll just answer that they are part of the packet. But I've noticed some documents are missing, but the packet is now quite large. It's, I think, 117 pages or so. And it's probably going to be growing even more. Marge?
I just wanted to comment exactly that. It's 117 pages. It's almost impossible to read. Or to make one's way through, and there used to be a compartmentalization process or a little strip along the left-hand side of the screen. That allowed you to skip from piece, you know, a segment to segment in a packet, but that seems to have gone by the wayside. And it's literally impossible to make good sense out of 117-page document. That has presentations and long treatises, as well as pithy little. Comments from, from the public.
Right, and, and email threads, too, that are, can be really hard to parse. So, you know, if you can answer Mark's question, does it exist accessible to the public somewhere?
Yes, on the website. It's on, as you said, it's like a packet, and so on the website.
I was wondering if it existed someplace other than.
Oh, oh, that would be great, and, but Daniel would have to answer that.
Yeah.
I, I just, I just navigated to the website, and there is a packet there. I haven't opened it up, but I will do so now and let you know what I see there.
Okay, since you don't. Since, since our job here is kind of to ignore it. So I guess the only thing that's missing is that that is the SWAC packet. But I think DSAC, which is where complaints come in, has an entirely different set, and I don't think that that is being done. So it's probably actually, you know, 250 pages or something like that. And Marge, we're going to have to figure something out in terms of deciphering this when we can indeed. Take that up, because your point is absolutely correct. So I think that's where we are, you know, with that. I don't want to spend too much time on that, because I want to kind of get to the main issue, which is indeed the, you know, the, our discussions about. About what's going on with the Trash Talk Work Group and its subcommittees in particular. So understanding that there is indeed another meeting of the work group. Tomorrow, starting at 3:30, so 3:30, 3 o'clock, something like that. Is there anything more about the, the information in the packets before we move on? Okay, let's go ahead and move on then to that. But, but I guess before we do that, Brent, I'm wondering if you're. With us, if you can, I don't know, can you turn on your camera and? Come in and say hi? We'd just like to welcome you to the. Indeed, to. The council and the committee.
We can't quite hear you, Brent.
We can't hear you. Unfortunately.
If you go to the settings gear wheel on the upper right-hand side. You should be able to choose a different audio option, whether that's via computer, you can choose your headset perhaps. Sometimes it goes through your computer audio instead of your headset. And if that doesn't work. Nope. And if that doesn't work, sometimes changing the audio to a phone call is a good option. And when you select that phone call option under audio, you should be able to dial the phone number and call in. Just as a backup. Sorry to interrupt, Chair.
Oh, no, quite, quite all right. Thank you, Daniel, for that advice. We're still not hearing you, Brent.
No, still not hearing me? Okay.
No, there we go.
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Sorry about that.
Oh, no problem. Do you want to just give us a brief little intro as to who you are and how you ended up here?
Um, I'm Brent Polowski, lifelong resident of the area. Background, you know, civil and environmental engineer. How I got on the committee was I was reading articles online, and I sent an email in and said, if you have an open slot, I'd be willing to volunteer. And here I am.
Okay. Yeah, excellent. So did you catch kind of my introduction at the beginning? I just drew to make sure that you know that this is a little bit of a strange time for the Solid Waste Advisory Council and also the Disposal Site Advisory Committee.
Right, I did, I did get that.
Okay, good.
And so when you say it's, you, you say it's a. A challenging time right now. What's the driver of that challenge?
The driver of the challenge is the fact that there is the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group. Operation going on now, so this is kind of a special operation. Which the county has begun. So there's a facilitator, there are a number of activities. There is a work group, and now there are a number of subcommittees of the work group doing work about. One preparation for the next. Conditional use permit to come from the landfill. And so kind of catching up, I think, on information relating to that. And then secondly. The work group has been charged with. Addressing the future of solid waste in Benton County. Benton County does not have a sustainable materials management plan or a solid waste management plan. The last one is decades old and is really obsolete. So it's been operating without one for a long time, and so, again, trying to catch up, I think, on getting that done. So, so there's a lot of investigation going on. You know, about facts surrounding the landfill and about the future of solid waste in Oregon and in Benton County. And in order to, the, the Board of Commissioners has said they would like all of that conversation to happen at one table. And so are. Normally, we would be handling issues from the public. And a lot of those activities have, have just been shut down. What we, for us, what we can do is we have representatives. On, in that work group, and we also, as volunteers, have been working with some of the committees. And so we're meeting today, tonight. To, to discuss kind of what has happened and what, how we might want to proceed, you know, as a body going forward. Is that, does that make sense?
Yeah, that, that makes sense. I guess, you know, it seems like the, the top agenda is Benton County does not have a solid waste management plane, plan. And so there's, you said there's investigation that's going on with that. Who is the, who's ultimate response, ultimately responsible for drafting that solid waste management plan?
It's been decided that. They're going to hire, Benton County is going to hire a firm. To, you know, consultants to essentially help them do that. And so scoping operations, scoping of that plan are being tackled by a subcommittee and will be. And we'll go through the, the work group at some point in the future. And then that process of actually finding that consultant, consulting group. And contracting that out will happen sometime next year. That's my understanding.
All right, so I guess what's top of my mind is you identified this solid waste management plan is one of the key deliverables that they're working on. And as far as. If you were the name, you know, top, you know, maybe this is a top one, the top, maybe three or three to five items that. This committee hopes to get through in the next few months or next year, you know, is the way things go. This is one, can you off top of your head and not to get too much, much detailed conversation with the respective time here? But whether, you know, perhaps two and three that come after this.
Well, one of the prime responsibilities of the disposal site advisory committee is to handle. Complaints, specifically complaints having to do with the landfill. So that's one of the, one of the primary missions. So that's kind of an ongoing thing. And we were just kind of talking about that process has actually been ended, because the, the work group does not. Field complaints. They've just denied any role in that. But we aren't also able, you know, we're also not able to do that. So, Daniel.
I, I just want to, a quick clarification, DSAC does not handle complaints. They are a forum for community members to bring up complaints. Potentially, if, if that's what they would like to do, but DSAC does not handle any sort of complaints or responses to complaints outside of. Having that forum and discussing it within the group. Just a quick clarification.
Yeah, thank you, Daniel. So handle would not be the correct word. Field might be the correct word.
Got it, okay.
So, yeah, they're, having a dialogue with the public, well, with us, since we are the public. Is, is indeed one of the, so, so that would be one thing that I would. Put on the top list of what the, you know, the committee and the council are dealing with. Dealing with also not the right word, interest of ours, and. And then maybe I shouldn't. Monopolize this conversation. So are there other members who would like to chime in with the sorts of interests that you think? That, you know, the top five for, for Brent as to what SWAC and DSAC are looking for? Yeah, Marge?
Well, I was just wondering if Brent was asking about the work group. Were you, were you asking about the work group, or were you asking about DSAC?
Right, good question, as. I was mainly asking about the DSAC, I guess.
Okay.
Not seeing any of the, yeah, Debbie.
Well, Daniel, I was wondering if there's an orientation also, like we had after all the years I was in SWAC and DSAC, that there was no orientation, and then you provided that for us. And perhaps Brent, Brent could be provided with that information, that notebook, or. And so, just because, like, you know, we're almost 20 minutes in, and, and I think it's really valuable for you to know that. I'm not sure that with a limited work session and trying to, and finding out what's going on with the Common Understandings group. We could, we could, we could discuss those the whole time. So that's all I was wondering, because.
Sure, sure.
Helpful.
Yeah, certainly. Let's move on, and I'll be a listener here, and. So, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we, we will see if we can get you more information in an offline manner. But we really do need to, to move on, I think. So, thank you.
Um, so just before we do that, I would just suggest, Brent, that you take a look at some of the past agendas. Because the agendas for the SWAC and the DSAC have a long list of things that we intend to get to. They aren't, it's not necessarily prioritized, so it's not in an order of a top five, top 10 sort of thing. But there's a, there's a growing list, and we were working our way through those things. Before the, the county basically said we had to stop meeting and working on that stuff while the Talks Trash Work Group is working. So that might be a good resource for you to go back and look some of the prior agendas. So that'd be before, go back to like July.
Got it. Okay, thank you. All right.
You're welcome.
And actually, that, thank you, Mark. That's really good. That's actually part of tonight's agenda. If you navigate to the page that has tonight's agenda, it has a list of items after the agenda proper. You know, for upcoming meetings, you know, whenever they do resume. So let's move on to. The work group. And I, I thought for this discussion, well. I'm jumping ahead of myself. So, so there's an issue I'd like to bring up, and I think it's a. It's important for me to set this right, and it has to do with the work group and with. The Disposal Site Advisory Committee in particular. And this has to do with, we've run into difficulty having to do with a quorum. And. I can just describe that very briefly, which is. Because we have people who are volunteering for committees, on one of the subcommittees of the work group, there is indeed a quorum of people. Yeah, Marge?
Yeah, I have prepared a statement because I'm particularly involved in this. So could I read my statement, and then you could make further comments? Is that okay with you? Okay, so I've prepared a statement that I'm going to read. "I was excited to join the solid waste process work group, believing it to be formed to provide access to the process of solid waste management in Benton County. To the residents of Benton County, as its title plainly states. But I have come to believe that the work group process is so tightly controlled by county staff. That it has become little more than an effort to place a false stamp of community engagement on a process. That has been largely predetermined by county staff. Because of my volunteer service on SWAC and DSAC, I have been prevented from participating in public meetings associated with the Benton County Talks Trash Capacity Subcommittee. By an aggressive interpretation of public meeting law by our county attorney and county staff. This is despite the fact that no SWAC or DSAC business was being conducted at the subcommittee meetings. In fact, I was even denied the right to listen to the subcommittee meeting in real time. The Oregon DOJ Attorney General's Public Records and Meetings 2019 Manual, Section 2C1B states. "If a quorum of a governing body gathers to discuss matters outside its jurisdiction, it is not meeting within the purview of the public meetings law. Therefore, it is difficult to see how my participation, much less my mere attendance, could constitute a public meetings law violation. While county residents' community engagement is severely curtailed, no such obstacle exists for communication with Republic Services. We, the community, the taxpayers, are hamstrung and kept at arm's length and joined from participating in these public meetings. While Republic Services has favored status, can communicate freely among its representatives and in private with the county without limitation. My experience within the work group and subcommittee process is that comments and suggestions from community members are ignored, suppressed, and replaced with county staff boilerplate. Subcommittees of the BCTT Work Group convened to provide community input are chaired and controlled by members of county staff. And this work group process will end up costing our taxpayers over $200,000. Despite the stated objective, it seems clear to me that this process has been designed and implemented to prevent meaningful public input. And steps should be taken to rectify this situation. Thank you."
Thank you, Marge.
So Ken, go on and elaborate.
So, so we have a situation where. It, it's, as Marge kind of laid it out, so we have volunteers, you know, the ones who are actually involved in. The pursuit of these matters, who are being precluded from actually participating in the work group. And kind of for reasons which. You know, it's hard for me to, to express it, you know, kind of exactly. They just seem to be artificially barriers are kind of artificially put up. And, and it's, it's an aggressive interpretation of public meetings law. And it also is a jurisdictional thing. So it's not really up to the county to enforce that law. I mean, that's a matter, matter for civil court. You know, if someone were to say that they were, if that law was being broken, I mean, it could be taken to court. So. I mean, I'm very sympathetic with, and I'm especially sympathetic because for reasons which I think are very unfair, this has come down upon Marge. Essentially, as a good citizen, kind of taking the brunt of this problem. Because of her good citizenship, you know, because she was willing to step forward, if you will. So. The thing that I would like to discuss is for, and, and also, this is kind of, this, this is a disposal site advisory committee issue. I mean, they should resolve essentially this quorum situation that they've got in some way that they like. So that is indeed you folks. And so I, I don't like the, the method that has been used to resolve this so far. And so I think that we should have a discussion about how we, as the Disposal Site Advisory Committee, would like to resolve this situation more fairly. Yeah, Chuck.
Let's see if I can explain it. What transpired here so we can learn about. Things a little bit better. They decided to have a one-table approach, and the one-table approach was really get across a bridge where we could come under a common understanding of items, if you will. So under that concept, it's a good concept, but it does preclude other committees. Bringing up other topics, so we don't have a confliction with the one table. So even though that we bring items up here, we have ambassadors. To go to the table with the Benton County Talks Trash. So there's a conduit there. It's just a, a channel conduit to get back to the one-table concept where all ideas and, and resolutions are expressed there. And sometimes it does limit. Because there is a limit on the committee, it, it doesn't open. The. Whole community to sit at the table, just representatives, although there is public comments there. So that's basically how it's formatted, so. You know, our, our topics should come up to be able to go down the conduit to that committee. But now what we are, some of the members are also on a subcommittee. I'm on the subcommittee for size, capacity, and longevity. That's part of the Benton County Talks Trash. So. I'm assuming is if we can. As we're learning stuff on our subcommittees, report back to our ambassadors. As we're learning stuff on our subcommittees, report back to our ambassadors if we know something that needs to go to the general. Table and I maybe I mixed it around a little bit, but that's kind of how the arena is set.
Okay, Marge.
Oh, I was just hoping that Chuck would get to the point.
So what I would. What I would, um, what I'm interested in putting forward is. That. If. Right now we have a very awkward situation that occurs if five of our members. Show up in the committee that Chuck is talking about. So, uh, those five members are Ian McNabb, Chuck Gilbert, Mark Jaeger. Marge, Pop and myself. And so that constitutes quorum. Now you would think under one table, the easy thing to do would just say that. That the disposal site advisory committee is part of the one table. And therefore this is indeed a disposal site advisory committee meeting. For during that committee, et cetera. But for some reason. Those arguments don't seem to hold sway. So what I'm proposing is that of those five members. We select one at random. Who is the designated person to sit out the meeting? If there is an, if indeed this quorum situation does indeed kind of persist as in being an obstacle. Because right now the selection process by which Marge is accepting that burden is, is frankly just unacceptable. Yeah, Marge.
I, I just assume accept it as anyone else. It's only that I believe it is wrong. I just believe it's a wrong policy and, and, um, one thing that bothers me greatly. Greatly is that I was listening to the legal subcommittee and our county attorney. Stated and, and it was repeated to the work group that, um, that, um, violations. At Coffin Buute were not, um, actively. Looked at by the county that they only were looked at if somebody complained about them. And yet that's a completely different philosophy than as being, um, as being, uh. Used with respect to open meetings law. It's completely contradictory to that. And I almost feel that the, the use of public meetings law like this is. An effect, uh, an attempt to control and constrain our public input process.
Okay, Chuck, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, I was a little confused myself because. I did go to other committees and listened into them. I wasn't on the committee. But I thought there was, I thought the, uh, members of the community could listen into it. Without, uh, any apprehension. And that's what, uh. Where, uh. I was a little confused when, uh, Marge just came in and declared she was just a member of the community that wanted to listen. And I'm not sure how it was determined. Under that status, you became, we became a quorum, I guess, is where I have a little confusion with it.
Yeah, so I, I don't know what else to add. You know, she, she was not able to sign on even as a member of the public. So. Because it's because she sits on this, you know, on, on the. Uh, disposal site advisory committee. So, um, yeah, Debbie.
Well, I, I'm interested in Daniel's point of view as a county, uh, staff member and in charge, kind of in charge of our work group. His perspective on this, then I'll have more questions.
Okay, good. So Daniel.
Yeah, a couple of things. First of all, um, this was very clear guidance from county council. And I really encourage that these sort of conversations, uh, especially when you're discussing. The legality of aspects, um, you should really be having those conversations with county council if that's an issue. The second piece is that to Marge's point, um, knowingly violating public meeting law is not okay. It, it doesn't, it doesn't come down to, um, how it's enforced. Public meeting law exists for a reason and you shouldn't be knowingly violating public meeting law. Just because you think that it's not going to be enforced, uh, that is not appropriate. Um, and to Ken's earlier point, um, I would highly recommend not to speak to the county's jurisdiction. On whether or not they can have any role in guiding or not hosting meetings that. Violate public meeting law. Uh, that's another piece that I would highly recommend. Leaving to county council to make that distinction because you pretty clearly made it during this meeting. I don't think that's accurate. And generally, um, I also wanted to throw in a quick time check. There's 14 minutes left for you all to be discussing. The liaison opportunity for the work group. Um, and generally the, these sort of legal questions should really be handled. And discussed with county council. Thank you.
Yeah, Debbie.
Well, in light of that, I know initially there were two members from, from SWAC DSAC. That were going to go to the common understandings group. Now, is there a way that we can avoid? Being in trouble with any legality of meetings by the people, the people who attend those meetings. Limit them, but I know I can come in and watch like as a zoom or a whatever, however the meeting setup, I have attended others. And watch, but I'm not participating. Is there a way that we can keep ourselves out of trouble? But still participate because we are supposed, two of our members are supposed to be part of the working group.
Well, the answer is, you know, if you tried to, if Debbie, if you tried to attend. The, the committee, the subcommittee that we're talking about, you know, even as a member of public, you would not be able to do that. So, so there are meetings which are off limits to you. Because of the quorum issue. Yeah, Mark.
Yeah, I, I guess I wonder how, how that rolls up. I understand we've got time constraints and all those sorts of things, but. So if Debbie and Brent and I. Decided that we wanted to attend the, uh, meeting of the entire work group, the Benton County Talks Trash Work Group. That we would not be allowed to attend because we would then constitute a quorum if Joel and Marge were also on the work group. We want, we would have to get off. Is that what Daniel, is that what you're saying? That we would be prevented from listening or participating or even showing up, I guess, at the, at the, at the work group meeting on, on, on Thursday.
Definitely a better question for county council on that. Um, I got guidance specifically on the subcommittee involvement. But I highly encourage you and I will happily facilitate, uh, conversation dialogue with anybody who's interested in. Talking to county council and asking these important questions.
Okay, I don't know. It just seems very odd.
Well, it, it is very odd. It, it's highly strange. So I'm very happy that we had this. I'm, go ahead, Mark.
I was just going to jump in. The, it still remains, uh, if the county council's interpretation is what's going to rule here. Then it seems like there needs to be a fairer system for determining who gets kicked out of the meetings. Because at this point, Marge has volunteered, at least as far as I know, in two different meetings to voluntarily step back. But, um, she's not the only member of DSAC and, um, it seems like there needs to be a fairer distribution of that. Requirement to know, to not be allowed to participate.
Absolutely. And so I guess that's going to be part of our. Uh, the inquiry that we're going to make to the legal department. So I'm, I'm sorry that it's taken so much time, but I think this is a very important conversation for us to have. Because it, it does indeed affect all of us. Because Daniel has made it clear that essentially it's a personal responsibility item. For members of this council and committee. To be aware of their surroundings that, you know, that they enter. And I, I just have to say in this particular instance, you know, a, as I said before, Marge has been chosen not for any fair reason. You know, and, and mostly because she's willing to volunteer as she just did a little while ago. And that's just not really fair. So, but I accept the idea that. You know, we, we, we should move on to a little bit more guidance, uh, you know, in the time that we've got left, you know, the 10 minutes or so. So we will. Is there someone who wants to take this up with county council?
I, I, I do not, but I wondered if Mark Jaeger might want to because he seems to have more. Legal background, given that he, um, was a, um, a playing that. A fairly high level role in, um, county. In the county government for a number of years. And probably has more exposure to the law than, than, than most of us.
It, it does seem to me that, um, I'm happy to try to facilitate a conversation, but I really don't think it's a conversation that's a one-on-one discussion with, uh, Mr. Crony. It seems like, um, the entire committee should participate in that. So maybe we could ask for a special meeting through Daniel. A special meeting to have, uh, a meeting with, uh, Mr. Crony to, uh, to discuss, um, this issue. And, and exactly the point that I just made, if five of us show up tomorrow night at the public meeting. What is going to happen there? Someone going to escort one of us out of the room? Um, or is Daniel saying that it's our job to escort ourselves out of the room so we don't violate public meeting law? Again, the, the piece of the language from the attorney general's guidance on public meetings clearly states. That showing up in a meeting like that is not considered a meeting of the solid waste advisory council or. The disposal, disposal site advisory committee. Anyhow, getting, getting back to the point, we should, I think we should set a, a meeting with, with Mr. Crony for the group.
Yes, indeed. Yeah, Debbie.
Agreed. Do we have to make motions for that? Or Daniel, can you just set that as, uh, arrange that for us? Another work meeting or whatever it would be.
Daniel, make it so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll work with county council on it. Um, I'm also mindful that that is not in the charge of the group right now. So we'll see what the board of commissioners wants to, uh, handle, uh, with that and, uh, go from there. But at the very least, county council will. Be aware of this conversation and see what can happen next.
I'm, I'm unclear as to why you say it's not part of the charge of the group right now. Seems like it directly has to do with.
DSAC. Sorry, go on.
It, it seems like it directly has to do with whether or not our members get to attend. The work group meetings. Uh, that's fairly direct connection, it would seem to me.
No, I, I hear you. What I'm saying is that right now SWAC and DSAC have a one-hour liaison opportunity between work group meetings. And a public meeting of SWAC and DSAC to discuss public meeting law is not that. But I think obviously this is an important topic. I'm just saying what I know and the guidance that we've already gotten from the board of commissioners does not include. A discussion on explaining public meeting law, uh, to DSAC and SWAC. So what I'm going to do is go back to the county council, let, let them know what happened. And what was discussed and see what options we want to communicate that to the rest of the group, whether that's via another public meeting like this. Or via memo or via a conversation with Mark. We'll see how that goes, but I think obviously the group really needs to hear about, uh, county council's guidance on this.
Okay, good. It, it's not a conversation that you're going to have with Mark. Mark said that it should be done with the entire, the entire council here. So. That's, that's, I think what needs to happen. All right. Marge, is there anything else you would like to tell us about? Your last sessions, um, as part of the work group.
Well, the, the process has been extended, but. It's my understanding that the number of work group need meetings will not be, um, increased. And so, um, I'm a little confused about that. I'm a little bit confused and. In. What the purpose of the extension is and, and how quickly the business of. The work group got transferred to subcommittees. And, and without a real, um, forward-looking plan. It just kind of happened. And then in retrospect, it was said, well, we're not going to. It, it seemed to me in retrospect, we're not going to have any more, uh, any more. In number work group meetings. That will be, uh, taken care of in subcommittee meetings. So that was kind of, uh, not a forward-looking, but a backward-looking explanation. Not a forward-looking, um, uh, announcement, but a backward-looking explanation. And so I'm, and I don't see on the website, I don't see. The, we're, we're having these many more meetings and at this meeting, um, our purpose is this, that this meeting, our purpose is that. And so it just, um, seems like the process right now could be clearer. I, it'd be great with me if it were, if, if it were clearer.
Well, it, it does seem to be a developing situation. Latest committee that I was in, uh, scheduled three more meetings, basically meeting once a week. You know, between, uh, you know, tomorrow and. You, yeah, so meeting, you know, in order, in order to get the work done, I guess. And so. You know, like you, I think that it's just really mysterious as to. And, and that seemed to have been done just, um, because the facility or felt that there wasn't. Enough time to achieve. You know, what needed to be achieved, whatever that might be. So it does seem like clear. So, so Chuck. You're too muted.
I'm on the committee, uh, for sizing capacity and longevity. And, uh, we hadn't come to fruition on, uh. Consensus of the size, capacity and longevity. So the question was, is could we have more meetings to see if we can come to fruition or. Or consensus on those terms. So. I, what I was afraid of is we were just going to have one more and we haven't resolved it. So. I was happy to see maybe if we have three more, we can be definitive what size, capacity and longevity is with the landfill.
Okay.
Brent has his hand up.
Oh, did you? Well, Debbie and then Brent.
Okay, well, I just wanted to, and is there. I, my understanding was I thought this meeting was going to be, we're hoping to get a little information from those subcommittees or the group. Me to share with the rest of us. So did Ken or Mark, are you both on, and Chuck is for sure on subcommittees? And is there a direction that you're, or some things that you learned that you could share with us? And is there a direction that you're, or some things that you learned that you could share with us?
Yeah. So Brent, before we go into that?
That would be great for Brent first.
Yeah, Brent, did you?
Just a question. It seems to me if the county is going to hire a consultant to do the solid waste plan, that's the one thing that's going to come out of the solid waste plan. I assume if they're hiring a firm, they're going to take an engineering approach and look at the size of the landfill and make predictions on its capacity and longevity. Is that what we expect to come out of this consultant role that's coming?
Well, I'm on that committee, the one having to do the Sustainable Materials Management Plan. And so we aren't overlapping with, you know, the other subcommittees. We're letting them kind of do their job. But the Sustainable Materials Management Plan isn't going to come about. It's going to take quite a bit of time, a year or two. Meanwhile, there is the conditional use permit application that's kind of looming on the event horizon. So I think that committee having to do with the size is really focused on getting information in place before the conditional use permit hits the floor. So, Mark, did you?
All right.
Go ahead, follow up, Brent. Did you have any?
No, I'm sorry. I was just saying, thanks. It's, I, I, I guess I see now why you, there's something happening before the, you get your plan. So thanks for that understanding.
Yeah, sure.
I was just going to respond to Debbie's information or request there. So I serve on two subcommittees. I serve on the landfill size subcommittee and also the land use, past land use, a subcommittee. And in the landfill size subcommittee, as Chuck said, we're still sort of working our way through the process of trying to take a look at what we consider to be the baseline. What information do we know about the landfill current permitted airspace as well as what the current loads, if you will, are to the, to the landfill? How much is coming in? And then, and then we're trying to work through reaching an agreement on forward-looking assumptions in terms of how much waste do we expect will come in in the future? You know, what, what do we expect to happen or not happen with the current permitted airspace? Because there's changes every year and things like that. So we're working our way through that. On the prior land use activities subcommittee, there's been a very long table that's been developed that shows all the prior land use actions and a listing of either requirements or conditions of approval. And that work group is trying to ascertain whether or not prior conditions of approval have been complied with. And so it's a process of going through, I guess, the first, the first record in there is 1974 and there's probably, well, I think the document's like 60 pages long right now where we're trying to work our, that document. So it's a, it's, it's a process and, and, and we're, and we're taking our time trying to get to the, to the bottom line in those things.
Yeah, Marge.
I wanted to speak to the Sustainable Materials Management Plan Subcommittee for a minute, which is probably the most important thing that came out almost immediately is that we are not going to look at it as a solid waste problem, but that it's a sustainable materials, full lifecycle process. And in particular, the Portland Metro region, I think two years ago had such a plan made up for them. And they based a lot of their plan on the values that their citizens, that their residents and community members had and how that would, how this plan would make those values come to life. And it seems like in Benton County, we have a similar plan, a vision for 2040 that in states, the values of sustainability, environmentally responsible behavior, equity, you know, just many of the values that Benton County residents hold. And this, our plan will also bring that, that, those values forward in the plan. So, and, and if you're particularly interested in that, given your, you know, your background in environmental engineering, if you go to the subcommittee, the, the the SMMP subcommittee webpage, you can find a lot of material there of, of what has, what is being discussed and plans for other counties that, you know, that might serve as a benchmark for us.
Okay, great. Thanks.
I, I think you'll need to get that URL. I have never been able to successfully navigate to it, you know, just starting at the Benton County page. So you could ask me or someone else for the direct URL because otherwise you'll never find it.
Yeah, perhaps Daniel could send it to you because I don't think we can. So Daniel has put a thumbs up that he will send you the direct link.
Yeah, to all the committees, the subcommittees, I should say, I think would be good. I'll just add for the Sustainable Materials Management Plan Subcommittee, we've started out by looking at a kind of master table of contents taken from other SMMP plans for other counties from their table of contents. We really haven't begun to establish the things that kind of like Marge says are really value-driven from, you know, really, which are really unique to Benton County. So a lot of those other SMMPs are from counties that don't have a landfill. So there's, there's still an adjustment period, I think, that we're going to go through. And frankly, a lot of those plans are not. You know, I don't think Benton County wants a me-too plan. I think they want, they've, they've got a lot of money allocated. And so I think they want an exemplary plan, you know, like Portland Metro did. And we're not really on track to do that yet. It's more a kind of a me-too approach. So I think that's kind of what's happening in that subcommittee. So let's see, before we run out of time, I just wanted to handle a kind of an agenda item here, which is, you know, we're approaching the end of the year for DSAC in particular, and there is a report that DSAC is supposed to send to DEQ having to do with complaints. And this is actually complaints that were received for last year. And earlier in the year, Daniel informed me that it's good for the, for us to send that in, you know, before the end of the year. So I think that well, I want to call for a December meeting to handle particularly that obligation. You know, as a statement, a state mandated board, that's a state mandated function. So I'm going to call for a meeting that Daniel can schedule for us in December to get that done. And if there's some sort of legal problem with us actually doing that, I mean, I don't see any language in the bylaws for DSAC that prevents DSAC from meeting if it's so wants. I think the county is supposed to just expedite that. But if, if there is such a problem, then it seems like that's something that we could handle when we talk to the the county attorney.
Yeah, we, there won't, right now, there's not going to be another meeting set to handle anything but liaising with the work group members just based on Board of Commissioners guidance. So we can follow up with the Board of Commissioners once they kind of give the okay to move on with other topics with this work group. But is that the Board of Commissioners guidance on what topics these meetings focus on? And right now, they only want topics associated with worker liaison opportunities. There's also not a requirement for those that report to be submitted this year. So you have plenty of time.
Well, I guess if you accounted infinity, yes, indeed, we do have plenty of time. We can submit it like 12 years from now also. The, the point is not that we are under an obligation to submit that. The point is that we would like to submit that, or at least we would like to discuss submitting that. And so that's, that's kind of a different matter. And, and this is a state mandated, you know, the, the state actually drew up regulations that kind of obligate the county hosting a landfill to have a disposal site advisory committee. So just let the minutes show for this meeting that I've called for that meeting. And I've asked if there's going to be some impediments that meeting for the county attorney to explain that impediment. Is that clear? Daniel, I'm looking at you.
Sure. Yeah. And I think I explained it as well, but I will make sure that shows up in the minutes.
Okay, thank you. Well, we're at time. Are there any last comments, questions that people want to ask? Okay, hearing none. I think Brent, we're all very happy to see your face here in the meeting.
Thanks.
We look forward to your participation, you know, as year goes on. Again, things will get a little bit more normal. This, this meeting has not been normal kind of from the very beginning. And we're kind of in the middle of a not normal time. But I look forward to the day when we can really proceed to kind of work down our list of, you know, things that we would like to do and hear about what your concerns are and kind of what your views are and the future of solid waste in the, in the county. So, thanks. And, yeah, Debbie.
I just want to say, um, happy Thanksgiving to everybody and see you in December.
Yeah, thank you, Debbie.
Yes, indeed. Yes. And, and thank you all very much.
Debbie, thank you so much for that. That's great. Happy Thanksgiving to you as well.
Yes, yeah. Happy holidays to all. Okay, I think it's time for us to adjourn. So let's see, I guess I have need to do this officially. I have to hear a motion or something like that?
I moved.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Marge. All in favor of thing goodbye for now? It's unanimous.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Daniel.
Thanks.